6/20/22. Isaac, do you want to call the roll?
Yes. Doug Venskuter?
Here? I'm here.
Mary French?
Here.
Stephanie Garner? Dave Huser?
Here.
Dave Larson?
Here.
Kate Payne?
Here.
Heidi Solon?
Here.
We have the agenda that's dated January 6, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
It's a little hard to hear. Mary? Speak into the...
There. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If the agenda is approved as printed. We have the minutes of the December 2, 2021, meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The minutes of the December 2, 2021, meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes of the December 2, 2021, minutes. Opening it to... There are two public hearings. The first hearing is on the... An amendment to the approved plan that was for the school site on Horton. I want to remind the commission that this is the public hearing. It's not the plant... Time for discussion on the commission. It is for public hearing. Those of those who want to speak on this first revision from the public, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and you have approximately five minutes to give your comments. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this first public hearing? If not, can we do the second public hearing before we do the presentation?
Mary, can I just ask for clarification? Is there another time for me to speak on these? They're going to be... That's what I thought.
Yeah. After the public hearing, then we'll give the applicant the opportunity.
Sure. Thank you.
Isaac, would you prefer to do them separately or together?
Yeah, we should probably do them separately.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing for the Horton... The Horton Road project. Is there anyone from the applicant who would like to speak on this?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. It's good to be here for the third time in a row. Really wanted to, as much as anything...
Ed, would you please... Your name and address?
Yep, thank you. Ed Clamforth, Superintendent of Waverly-Shawrock Schools. My address is 1010 Reamer Road. Wanted to have a conversation with you tonight about the changes that we're proposing. Certainly want to answer some questions, but provide you with some rationale as well for what we would like to do and kind of what our thinking has been along the way. So, we're talking about the north project, the Horton Road project. So you know, based on the materials that have been provided to you, what we're looking to ask you to approve. One of those is the length of the road. Obviously, that extends well beyond what we're needing to access the school. And I've got some... This is driven primarily, I would say, there are probably a couple of factors, but driven primarily by budget. You know, as you're probably aware, we have a limited amount of money that's available to provide to construct these schools. And there's a considerable amount that's going into meeting the demands of the city. You know, probably naively so. I entered into this with the idea being that if we could identify some properties and made some... Along some streets that were somewhat well-traveled and well-developed, that we could build a driveway and go into our schools. Again, perhaps naive, but have come to realize that that's not the case. And so, in working with the city, as we've come to realize that we had to construct these, not as driveways, but as city streets, immediately the cost of that increased dramatically. And I don't have to tell all of you that it's not a great time to be building anything. And so inflation certainly is having an impact on our ability to do what we want to do at the scale that we want to do, not only to meet today's demands, but to meet the demands of the future, because we continue to grow. Our enrollment is up again this year. An enrollment projection that we had done a number of years ago indicated that we would continue to see some modest growth. And we want to do this right the first time and have enough classrooms to accommodate things well into the future and not have to go back and try to add on to buildings, you know, time and time again. And so trying to find every dollar that we have available to be able to do that is important to us. And really, that's probably driving, as much as anything, our reason for coming back here and asking you to consider these changes. I appreciate and understand where the city is and their recommendation to you. They too are looking to the future and want to plan for that. But we're asking for some special consideration, because this is a special project. You guys have never dealt with trying to decide what's right for a school site. This might be the only time that you do. I certainly hope it's the only time I have to ever have to stand here and talk about developing a school site, or a couple of school sites. But it's exciting and it's certainly an opportunity for Waverly and Waverly-Shawrock that we want to get right. And so at that site, then, the two primary things really are the length of that street, which we would like you to consider allowing us to terminate that at our driveway. And the other is, then, the sewer line that was originally put into the plans and that you approved the first time, that would extend to the north-northwest up towards St. Mary's Church. That, too, is, you know, it's not needed for us in any way. So those are the two primary things on that site that we would like you to consider. If you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to entertain those.
With regard to the sewer line, is that on Sheet 5 of the proposed that you're providing an easement for future installation of that?
Page 5.
Sheet C4.1.
This is Mike Murphy. I'm with Larson Engineering, the civil engineer for the project. I can help address any questions you may have. Again, it is a little hard to hear, especially with some of the shuffling of paper, but I'll do my best to try to address the questions.
I didn't hear a word he said.
He just said he's there.
And it's already here.
And I think your question was, it is on the fifth page of that attachment.
In the purple, that's... It's an easement that they're providing for future...
We would provide an easement, correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Same with the road, too?
Absolutely.
With respect to the shortening of the street on the south side there, what are the implications there, if any, for future development, future connectivity to the school?
That was the question.
Yeah. Kathy, could you ask that again?
Sure. With respect to the shortening of the street on the south side, what kinds of implications are there for future development or future extension of that street?
There's an easement shown.
The school district would provide a 100-foot easement through the property for that extension. As Ed mentioned, it's not necessary for the construction of the school site or operation of the school site to extend that roadway the entire length or even as far as the 705 feet previously shown. The... We are designing that roadway for a 40 mile an hour speed limit. It's recommended that the slope not exceed 5% to meet the SUDAS requirements. So there's a lot of cut that's occurring. It's quite extensive, the cut needed to make that at a 5% because the grade is so steep at its current condition. And really, a lot of that material that would be cut from there wants to go to the south to fill areas that are lower, but we don't really have access to that. So in the future, it would make sense for all that material used for extension of that roadway to be placed to level or raise the area, the future development to the south rather than into the school site. But the easement would provide access to whomever would extend that roadway.
Are there further questions?
So I have a question. And why it was determined to be the school's responsibility to extend it to St. Mary's? I mean, wasn't that more St. Mary's responsibility when they were putting it in? Or when they were building?
So first, it doesn't go all the way to St. Mary's.
Oh, okay.
It just goes to Summit. The extension of Summit.
Okay. It just said on the...
The second part of your question I can't answer. That'd be...
Okay.
Because we always expect and we require developers to develop to the edge of their property so that they can extend the public facilities to the next developer, which is what happened in this situation, because that sewer was extended up to across the street from where they're connecting to. The same with the street. We expect subdividers to... Or project people to extend the street to the next development, to the ability... In this situation, we wouldn't... We didn't think it was reasonable to extend it all the way across to the end of the parcel, because the real next connection was the potential location of a street from the south. And that was the first location of that extension. And the answer to who would end up doing this is most likely the city of Waverly. These taxpayers will pay for the extension of the street if it isn't done by the developer, the project developer in this situation. It's not something that a developer who would expect that road be extended to their... To where they are. So we'll end up with that, our taxpayers.
So if the city doesn't do it, the next developer would have a stubb street there? On their... Like if the south developer?
It's less likely that they'll connect to that area, because of the fact that that doesn't give them any benefit to their development, because they can develop the street and leave it unattached. And that's what ends up happening when we have gaps.
So in the Estes construction document that you shared...
Yeah, let me just kind of give you an overview, Heidi, and then that might answer your questions. So I apologize to those that are online here, but I shared a document that provides some estimated costs for these projects. And what I have highlighted here in particular are the things that we're asking you to reconsider. So if we look at the northeast site, that's the one we're talking about right now. The first line there, I don't have highlighted, but that's the difference between what we estimate, the difference in cost between what the city is requiring and what we would otherwise do. Basically, a 45-foot wide road in lieu of a 24-foot wide drive. But then that extension beyond our driveway, we're estimating a $250,000 and the sanitary sewer extension up to Summit of $91,000. I could go on. The next one is the west, and I can hold off on that. The total estimates, and, you know, I can't get into the details of how those were arrived at, because I don't know. That was work done by engineers and our construction management firm of just under $1.4 million to address the expectations, the requirements that the city have for this project. That really would be above and beyond what we would otherwise spend if we could just put a driveway in, is what we're looking at there. And we acknowledge that we're not asking to... For the city or for you to make some sort of approval to, you know, for us to recoup that $1.4 million. But we would like to, you know, save as much as we can to be able to put into these buildings. And that's why we're here.
So is it appropriate to ask questions, like, of this committee ourselves? Or do we go...
Yeah. No, go ahead.
So I guess I was just looking at this and curious, you know, what's the legacy impact of this decision, you know, for the commission with other developers? When they approach, or they, you know, are made aware of this decision, right? And then they're going to develop a parcel. How does this commission negotiate that, I guess? Case by case? What's the strategy? I guess I'm just asking for a legacy.
Generally, not every situation is going to be exactly the same, because there are certain circumstances that do occur. We have a lot of stubb streets in our community that developers have extended and created, you know, to the line of the next owner. I can see it out in the other project on the west side. There's three stubb streets into that, those two 40-acre fields. On this side, there's actually four streets that are stubbed to the north. We're trying to connect at least one of them, is all we're trying to do. Instead of saying it has to go all the way across the entire 40. And it is... It's hard to catch the gaps. I mean, if somebody is allowed not to do that, it's hard to get somebody else to do it without the city having to step in, because there's no economic incentive for them to catch up.
Right. Yeah, that's why I was just trying to approach it from a legacy perspective. If, you know, this were to be approved as shown, and then, you know, the next developer had some sort of shortened proposal, you know, it's like how... What's the position of the commission?
Certainly, the city would prefer a street connection, at least this far. We felt compromised with the idea of only going part of the way on the north and even probably less on the west, past the driveway. So it's... We kind of felt like we had gotten to that sweet spot in between, and some compromise in this situation. We have two sets of taxpayers that seem to be... Will bear this cost, most likely, whether it be the larger school district taxpayer base or the city's taxpayer base.
That's what I was going to say.
It's still the taxpayer.
Either way, let's put the money to the school. You don't know how long it's going to be before that gets developed, either south or north, you know? You never know that. And I think right now, let's put it in the school, and taxpayer's going to pay it one way or the other.
Yeah. Can I say a question about the sanitary sewer line? How much past Summit Road is still city limits? Like, what is that requirement? Because, I mean, I live on Summit Drive myself, and my backyard is city limits. So the benefit of extending that is for...
Actually, it's to... Actually, the north 10 acres is potentially available for other kinds of development, whether this... Whenever the school decides if and when they want to do that. And that was something that had been raised early on by the school itself. Now, whether they do it or not, that's their choice.
Or they could choose to do that when they decide to develop the 10 acres, too. So it wouldn't be a lost thing now, the city or the school is still responsible for that if there's further development.
And that is why it's... We're probably not as intent on that one. It's a $91,000 cost. And if they want to have someone develop that north 10 acres, it certainly would be on that.
They could negotiate at that.
Right.
So it's not like this is going to serve somebody in the near future. It would be a future expansion that the school would be making that decision on.
And I think that's an easier decision on the sewer than it is with the street, which would be an impediment. I mean, the sewer can be just required of the new developer or the new owner if and whenever one is chosen to be selected.
But it'd be immediate $450,000 savings, or that...
For all of these, right?
For the two sites, yeah.
I think, Heidi, your question, I think St. Mary's is in the city.
Well, the sewer and the shortening of the roads.
Oh, St. Mary's is?
St. Mary's is in the city. It actually goes around St. Mary's.
Oh, I was going to say, because...
Yeah. It goes around St. Mary's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Do I have to read it? All right. Move the Plaid Zoning Committee recommend approval of the Plaid survey to create parcel D to the City Council.
No. You're in the wrong one.
Yeah. Go up to public hearing.
I'm sorry. See, that's what I said. Move the Plaid Zoning Commission recommend approval of the amendment to the special provisional use for parcel ID 052640003 to part of adjustment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay. So one... Do one know?
Do you want to do a roll call?
Can we do...
Let's do a roll call. Do a roll call.
Okay. All right. We're going to do a roll call. Doug Venskuter?
Yes.
Mary French?
Yes.
Stephanie Garner? Dave Huser?
Yes.
Dave Larson?
No.
Kate Payne abstained. Kathy Olson?
Kathy, you're on mute.
Yes.
Heidi Solon?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
You know, the only comment I really have, you know, retrospectively here is, I hope this is well-documented in terms of, you know, some of the comments that were made around whose responsibility it may be or how the different requests may be handled for lengthening that road, for example. I think that should be reflected in the minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. All right. We're now going to open public hearing number two, which is for the school site on Fifth. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Are there any additional comments from the applicant?
Yep. Here, we're just looking for one change of significance, and that's changing how we access the south parking lot and where the drive into that parking lot goes. And again, you can see on the documents that you have, you know, what that change looks like. It saves us some distance on that street. Again, we appreciate the challenges that come with this and appreciate the concessions the city's already made in, you know, not requiring us to go to the south border. But even a small change like this, as I shared with you in the cost savings document, is not insignificant. You know, estimated $101,000 savings here. So that's what we're asking primarily for this site.
Any questions or comments from the board?
So I don't know if there's a representative that can speak to the engineering change of that curve? If there was, you know, a reason behind the original design? And then with this modification, kind of the pros and cons of that, other than length and cost?
I can answer that. Originally, staff recommended 300 feet between driveways. What we've provided is 231 feet between driveways. We were still able to get the traffic study recommended 650 feet of queuing area. We have our length, we have 675 provided. So I think it improves circulation quite a bit, simplifies it, and also cheapens up the construction costs.
So the big curve that you had at the south end, that you've essentially taken out, you're still okay with the buses and the bus turnarounds and so forth?
Buses would be on the north parking lot, using the north parking lot.
Okay.
Yeah, the large curve was for the 300-foot distance between driveways. Eliminating that requirement and providing 231, again, we still provide the 650-plus feet of queuing area identified by the dash line.
So one of the concerns that developers...
What if down the road, that queuing distance was inadequate? And some changes had to be made? What is the process there and who bears the responsibilities, cost-wise and so forth, for that?
Well, the traffic study did, you know, those are calculations and some assumptions and recommendations. They did state that they would encourage the school... They would recommend the school encourages bus ridership and alternate mobility access if this continues or proves to be a problem and queuing backs up onto the roadway. It will take some education, because the parents have a tendency to drop off immediately at the door or pick up at the door, where they'll be required to stack around the corner. So 650... 650 feet were recommended. 675 feet is provided with the dashed line.
Isaac, is... What's staff's recommendation on this?
Our recommendation is to stay with the original site plan that was approved. Again, we have some concerns about the queuing onto the street. Obviously, at the present time, if the school were built out and the road stops there, it's not going to back up southbound traffic. But in the future, if there's not a plan to accommodate for queuing backing up onto the public street, it's going to cause significant traffic concerns if that road is extended to the south, which we see it being extended to the south in the future. Whether that happens in five, 10 years, 50 years, we don't know that, but we do have some concerns about that.
One of the concerns that we did have is that the traffic study actually assumed that this would be a driveway off the highway. And it recognized that the queuing could be into that drive. And the way you approached these, this first lane, the door is on that side. And so your first 20 cars are going to fill in the space, or the first 20 or less. And most people are going to pass that line to go around and stack around the other... Past it. So in the other school was the opposite way, so that you came in from the other side. So there was much more likelihood to use the entire stacking area around the parking lot. So that was just the one thing we came up that we noticed was... Didn't get answered in the sense of, now that it's a street, how's that going to affect the potential for queuing? We're concerned about that, because this could be more of a collector's street, quite a collector's street, if it's the only north-south that goes into the next 80 to 100 acres. And that could be a significant problem at certain times of the day. We don't know that. It's a grade school. It's not as much maybe of a concern of other types of schools. But we still have some concerns about the queuing.
Is there any evidence...
one is chosen to be selected.
But it'd be immediate $450,000 savings.
For all of these, right?
For the two sites, yeah.
I think your question, I think St. Mary's is in the city.
Well, the sewer and the shortening of the roads.
St. Mary's is in the city. It actually goes around St. Mary's.
Oh, I was gonna say, because...
Yeah, it goes around St. Mary's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
Do I have to read it? All right. Move the Planning and Zoning Committee recommend approval of the Platte survey to create parcel duty to the city council.
No, you're in the wrong one.
Yeah, go up to public hearing.
I'm sorry. See, that's what I said. Move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of amendment to the special provisional use of partial ID 0526400003 to part of adjustment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay. So one no, one abstain.
Do you want to do a roll call?
Can we do, yeah.
Let's do a roll call. Do a roll call.
Okay. All right. We're in to a roll call. Doug Binskider?
Yes.
Mary French?
Yes.
Stephanie Garner? Dave Huser?
Yes.
Dave Larson?
No.
Kate Payne Stain? Kathy Olson?
Kathy, you're on mute.
Heidi Solon?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
You know, the only comment I really have, you know, retrospectively here is, I hope this is well documented in terms of, you know, some of the comments that were made around whose responsibility it may be or how the different requests may be handled for lengthening that road, for example. I think that should be reflected in the minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. All right. We're now going to open public hearing number two, which is for the school site on Fifth. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Are there any additional comments from the applicant?
Yep. Here, we're just looking for one change of significance, and that's changing how we access the south parking lot and where the drive into that parking lot goes. And again, you can see on the documents that you have, you know, what that change looks like. It saves us some distance on that street. Again, we appreciate the challenges that come with this and appreciate the concessions the city's already made in, you know, not requiring us to go to the south border. But even a small change like this, as I shared with you in the cost savings document, is not insignificant. You know, estimated $101,000 savings here. So that's what we're asking primarily for this site.
Any questions or comments from the board?
So I don't know if there's a representative that can speak to the engineering change of that curve, if there was, you know, a reason behind the original design. And then with this modification, kind of the pros and cons of that, other than length and cost.
I can answer that. Originally, staff recommended 300 feet between driveways. What we've provided is 231 feet between driveways. We were still able to get the traffic study recommended 650 feet of queuing area. We have our length, we have 675 provided. So I think it improves circulation quite a bit, simplifies it, and also cheapens up the construction costs.
So the big curve that you had at the south end, that you've essentially taken out, you're still okay with the buses and the bus turnarounds and so forth?
Buses would be on the north parking lot, using the north parking lot.
Okay.
Yeah, the large curve was for the 300-foot distance between driveways. Eliminating that requirement and providing 231, again, we still provide the 650-plus feet of queuing area identified by the dash line.
So one of the concerns that development...
What if down the road, that queuing distance was inadequate? And some changes had to be made? What is the process there and who bears the responsibilities cost-wise and so forth for that?
Well, the traffic study did, you know, those are calculations and some assumptions and recommendations. They did state that they would encourage the school, they would recommend the school encourages bus ridership and alternate mobility access if this continues or proves to be a problem and queuing backs up onto the roadway. It will take some education because the parents have a tendency to drop off immediately at the door or pick up at the door, where they'll be required to stack around the corner. So 650, 650 feet were recommended, 675 feet is provided with the dashed line.
Isaac, what's staff recommendation on this?
Our recommendation is to stay with the original site plan that was approved. Again, we have some concerns about the queuing onto the street. Obviously, at the present time, if the school were built out and the road stops there, it's not going to back up southbound traffic. But in the future, if there's not a plan to accommodate for queuing backing up onto the public street, it's going to cause significant traffic concerns if that road is extended to the south, which we see it being extended to the south in the future. Whether that happens in five, 10 years, 50 years, we don't know that, but we do have some concerns about that.
One of the concerns that we did have is that the traffic study actually assumed that this would be a driveway off the highway, and it recognized that the queuing could be into that drive. And the way you approach this first lane, the door is on that side, and so your first 20 cars are going to fill in the space or the first 20 or less. And most people are going to pass that line to go around and stack around the other, pass it. So in the other school was the opposite way, so that you came in from the other side. So there was much more likelihood to use the entire stacking area around the parking lot. So that was just the one thing we came up, that we noticed was, didn't get answered in the sense of now that it's a street, how's that going to affect the potential for queuing? We're concerned about that because this could be more of a collector's street, quite a collector's street if it's the only north-south that goes into the next 80 to 100 acres. And that could be a significant problem at certain times of the day. We don't know that. It's a grade school. It's not as much maybe of a concern of other types of schools, but we still have some concerns about the queuing.
Is there any evidence or, I mean, I'm assuming the first one, you know, giving the queuing, now we're stacking regarding safety. My kids were, my youngest was hitting middle school as that just opened up, and I know there were videos, there was trying to do all this education for parents. And I always felt nervous the four years when I would drop off or pick up, was I doing the right thing? Is it going to feel intuitive to parents so we don't have to worry about their...
Right. We would hope so. We don't know. You know, we're going to be half the size, the population of the middle school, so I'm not saying that there wouldn't be issues with people, you know, where they park and how they try to pick up and drop off their kids. But certainly, there will be some education needed.
The issue occurs not at drop-off. Drop-off, the cars will cycle through, it's pickup. Those parents that come a half hour early and read a book and wait for their child to walk out the door, they will need to be prompted to pull ahead to the beginning of the queue. If that happens, you know, that's what the traffic study was asking for, for queue lengths for the 48 parent vehicles they estimate will be waiting at the end of the day. We have more, we've allowed for more, again, 675 feet if they're using it correctly versus the 650 recommended. The traffic study was aware that that was a public roadway. So that's the concern, that 650 feet they recommended is needed to prevent cars from backing into the roadway. But there may need to be some staff monitoring that to make sure the parents are pulling up all the way to the front of the dash line.
There appears to be some...
What is our experience with the elementary schools now in terms of the number of cars queuing up at Cary, for example, or West Cedar or whatever?
They're all over. Wherever they can find a spot, you know, at West Cedar, they're parking in the library parking lot, they're parking in the church parking lot, they're on every street. At Cary, really, the only place they have is, well, I shouldn't say that, streets and the veterans' post, and it's southeast.
And approximately, how many cars are they? Somebody made reference to 48-car queue. How many cars currently are queuing up around those schools?
I don't have a good, yeah, I don't have a good answer for you, Kathy. You know, the reality is, we're going to have more kids that are going to need to be transported to these new schools just because of where they're located. You know, they're not going to walk and they're not going to ride their bikes. So we anticipate there will be more bus riders. We anticipate there will probably be more dropped off by car. We did a, I think it was about a year, year and a half ago, we actually tried to determine how many of our students currently walk in each of our schools in town. And it's surprisingly low despite where they're located. It was less than 10%. I think it was close to 7% when we did that. And so we're not talking about a whole lot more, but there will be more, certainly. So I don't have an answer for you, Kathy, as far as how many. I'm sorry.
So what would be the capacity, how many students at each of the schools?
So...
To start at least.
Right. So the northeast side, the one up on Horton Road, is built larger than the one on the west side. And this one at capacity, I would say at first, it's going to be in the 240-student range, most likely. When you think about our middle school right now, that's about 740, so less than a third, about a third of that size. But it could go to 300. So I think it's being built for right around 3...
The traffic study that we have access to said that the school in the west off of Fifth Avenue, at max capacity, would be 312 students.
And it also said that there would be 72 of them that'd be dropped off by parents, and the rest of them would be by bus, was their assumption.
Now, reading the, looking at the one plan, it's indicating some work on Fifth Avenue. Am I correct that we're adding a left-turn lane? Okay. And that's going to help too, in terms of backup.
We're following the recommendations of those that prepared the traffic study to provide a left-turn lane into the site and into the property to the north.
And then is there a deceleration lane on the south side of Fifth?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that whole question.
Is there a deceleration lane on the south side of Fifth for those that are going eastbound?
No, it's a joint bypass, and they have a free right into the public road which would serve the school site.
Okay, so there is a deceleration lane.
No.
True.
Yeah.
The speed limits have recommended to be reduced. I think that should be noted.
Can you repeat that?
The speed, the traffic study that was completed, they recommended reducing the speed limits. They, I believe they recommended reducing speed limits on both sites.
A school side?
Yeah, both school sites.
Like to 35 mile an hour during school times and, because they're currently 45.
It's 45 there, some at least.
Yeah.
Other comments or questions from the board?
So I was trying to determine, yeah, just one, I guess. I was trying to determine the, like, the car count difference between the curve and the collector, Fifth, I guess there, between the two proposals. I didn't see it maybe stated, but is there a guess or an estimate on how many cars difference that would be? Because I would...
Difference in queuing lengths between the two?
Yeah. And really, I guess, you know, I think what was kind of said, if nobody's advancing past the door of the school, right, if that's where the first car is, and there's really just the, you know, the 180 degrees of that curve is really the only difference between the two proposals, if people don't pull all the way around. Speaking kind of technically there, but is there any sort of estimate of how many cars have to be reduced by the change?
Mike, do you know the answer to that?
I don't, but I can tell you that the queue, the queue area basically shifts. You know, it starts earlier and ends earlier. So I'm not sure it changes significantly, but I can, I'll go on mute and try to give you that number here. Give me a minute.
Just kind of a follow-up question on that. In the event that the 675 feet or whatever, isn't that, I think, what you, or 650 or whatever that you're providing? In the event that that was inadequate, you are confident that parent education around other ways to traverse through there, that that will be adequate? That the alternate paths that will have to be taken for pickup, for example, there is adequate length available to educate the parents to take those steps?
So that's a tough one to answer. Mike may have a response that's different than mine, but one of the things that comes to mind is, you know, some things you just don't know until you start, and then you try to adapt and figure it out. We do have perhaps some flexibility with the use of that north parking lot. We would like to restrict that to buses, but perhaps there's an opportunity there where maybe one level, one grade level exits that way to ease. If we see there's too much pressure on the south parking lot, perhaps we say, fourth graders are only going to use the north parking lot to access schools, and you can't leave the building until the buses are gone. You know, get them out of the way. Parents are out there waiting and something like that. But I think there are opportunities there, Kathy, yes, to be able to educate people and to make the necessary changes to ensure that we have the space for all the cars needed.
Okay. You know, thanks for that, Ed. I just have concerns about questions raised in the future when there's a jam in the queuing, where people say, why didn't they think of this ahead of time?
Yep.
So that's kind of the reason I'm asking these questions.
Yep.
And I'll just add that there is available space. I mean, as this building fills, if it becomes an issue, there is available space to the west to extend that and increase that queue length an additional 350 feet.
The overall target, the overall goal, I guess, is...
I'm sorry. Another part of this kind of seems like it's almost like we're going into an airport, and you need a cell phone lot, and you got to have a place for people to go in and park themselves.
Can you repeat what he said?
Basically saying, like, say if you go to Seabrand Airport, they have an area where you can pull off to get a cell phone, then you can pull up to pick up your passenger.
You wait in the cell phone parking lot.
I think that's what I understood him to say.
But I think in looking at this, I think once you convince the pickup drivers to drive all the way around to the end of that loop, and that, rather than everyone stopping at the front door.
Yeah. And that's why we have a sidewalk all the way around there too.
So the primary place you would see children being let out would be on the west side, where the wider sidewalk is, not the initial sidewalk that's closest to the road? Is that, so that one wouldn't be, that's not a sidewalk?
The first one, I don't think is a sidewalk, is it?
Sure looks like it, but maybe not.
So you're talking about on the south side of the building?
Yep, south side.
There's two sidewalks.
Yeah, one is very wide.
The westmost sidewalk.
Yeah, that wide one is a sidewalk.
That's the one, he wouldn't let kids out.
That would be the main entrance.
The other door to exit the school building?
For those, for those that are being picked up by car, yes.
They would go out.
For those riding the bus, it would be on the opposite side of the building, on the north side.
But it doesn't, like, that's a 16.
Well, there's a second exit on the east side.
At the start of the pickup lane?
A narrow, I think that's a circular that goes around the outside of the building. I don't think that's an exit to use for that, or is it?
Oh, that's a future building addition block next to it then?
Right. And there is a door down there to exit the building, but we would not, I can't imagine that we would have many kids at all that would leave there, because that's, that would be exiting right from our media center.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure, because if people start leaving that way, then your backup's going to be stuck.
Yep. And they, yeah, I see what you mean. If people left there, they'd tell their parents to line up right there at that spot instead of going around, right? And that's not to say that we wouldn't have kids leave there, because we would have classrooms along the side of that. Third and fourth grade kids would be down in that area.
One of the questions I'd like to ask, because I know we didn't have a whole lot of time between our development team looking at this and moving forward with this, because we wanted to make it go quickly. The parking lot got changed. It did have a road down the middle of it, and it was, the parking people were entered from the center, and now...
Bill, there's a lot of paper shuffling going on, and it makes it hard to hear.
My apologies, Kathy. I'll stop moving my papers around.
So one of my concerns is that with the change in the parking lot, on the parking spaces, you're now entering those from the travel lanes, and you're backing out of them in the travel lanes. And you're going to have parents that are going to want to pull into those spaces to wait for their kids, so that they're closer to the front. And I didn't know how you were going to deal with that situation, because that's human nature to be as close to the front driveway or the front sidewalk as possible. And before, you kind of had that barrier, because you had to go in a different place to be able to park inside there. And I see that with kids kind of trying to cross that two lanes of traffic, trying to get to those parked cars.
In the original, they were going to have to cross the lanes of traffic to get to the parked cars as well.
Yeah.
Right. But it was almost like there was a barrier, so that would be less desirable, they wouldn't do it.
But the cars weren't backing into it, though. The cars were coming into the middle of the parking versus the, but it looks like it's wider, though, in the proposed now. It looks like it's not quite three lanes across there.
It's too late to be two lanes.
30-foot of width is provided for a drop-off and a one-way drive lane, which we believe is ample. The reason for the angled parking is to more simplify the circulation, to train people on how to use the lot. There were questions by staff during the design about, you know, what if I missed my parking spot and I had to back up and go the other direction? And there was some thought of confusion. The curved islands, which were provided to try to train people how to use the lot, it seemed like they're continually getting wider and wider to allow people to make the loop several times or back up and go in a different direction. And we just felt like all that internal curbing could be removed. Snow removal would be greatly eased with this layout, and it provides a pretty clear path on how to use the lot the very first time you enter.
Well, I think too, you're going to find that the parents aren't going to be parking because they'll soon realize they're waiting and waiting and waiting to back out. So they'll just, you know, line up.
Well, the parking lot will also be filled, for the most part, with teacher cars.
Yeah.
The kids will leave before the teachers.
I was honestly surprised to see the small number of parking spots, thinking of like back-to-school night, carnival, that type of stuff that, I agree with what you're saying, Kate, that the number of teachers there...
Well, I think the assumption is that during events, you can park in not only the parking spots, but along the curb.
Yeah.
Because it's too late.
Because it's too late.
And there's more parking spaces on this proposed than there were on the other, the approved one.
Actually, on this site, the southern parking lot is reduced from 62 parking spaces to 51. So on the north side, the southern parking lot gained a couple of parking spaces. And then this site, I think the north parking lot stays the same, and the southern parking lot is reduced in size.
This is a smaller school, though.
I'm just thinking, I added 150.
One of the things that makes this so difficult is that it seems as if it's very much cost-driven, which I understand, but at the expense of some desired design, and, you know, I think we all are very supportive of the new school and just want to make this as desirable and efficient as possible. And then we're faced with, at least in the moment, these cost challenges. So it's a tough one.
Okay. Are there any further questions?
Can I clarify one other thing? I mean, I'm not speaking, I'm speaking on their behalf.
Sure.
The, we've spent a lot of time talking about the concerns of the parking lot, but the question on the table is whether or not the drives can be closer together. The queuing space basically stays the same. It's not really different. So the request on the table, the amendment, is about bringing the parking lots closer together. Yes, it is a revised parking lot layout too, but the real request is about allowing us to bring it together.
Thank you for that clarification. Bill?
One of the questions that we had when we looked at this also and talked about the short, making the road shorter, was the idea that the detention area is going to be to the south of the school, which is quite large, and actually kind of comes up against where the street right-of-way needs to be or wants to be. And whether that would be, they would be already building that up to some extent, I mean, not to a full graded street right-of-way, but that if that, if that can be done in conjunction so that there's less work to do when you're talking about crossing that area with the street. They're also taking the pipe underneath that area and outletting the detention, the overflow beyond where the right-of-way is. So we had some discussion about that, but we hadn't made any firm decisions or agreements on whether or not they would be, in fact, doing some grading, at least some rough grading for that right-of-way through that space. And I thought that made some sense as a compromise if the road is going to be shortened, at least there would be, there are going to be working a lot of dirt work in that area for that detention area, and that's what we had hoped, there would be some, so it would not be inconsistent with the future extension of that street in that area.
Mike, can you comment on that? I think Gage was having a conversation about some of that stuff when he was up here a couple of weeks ago, wasn't he?
Yeah, as Bill mentioned, we have a large stormwater detention basin planned south of the parent drop off lot, there, there will, in order to, to build that, we have to build a berm on the east side, the prior parcel drains to the east, and that does stay out of the, the right of way, proposed right of way, right of way of the road, public road, the berm lies on the school's property, and there is a 10-foot path as well planned adjacent to that public roadway, and yes, he's right, we are proposing, because we're, because we're reducing the runoff rate in a hundred-year storm to match the five-year runoff rate from the farm field, so it, it's a great reduction in stormwater runoff, we feel that we're able to daylight across the road and let it go where it's currently going, again at a much lesser rate of runoff.
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move planning and zoning commission recommend approval of the amendment to the special provisional use for partial ID 0904100006 to board of adjustment.
Second.
Isaac, let's do a roll call.
Mary French?
Yes.
Dave Huser?
Yes.
Dave Larson?
Yes.
Kathy Olson?
You're muted.
She's thinking.
I will, yes.
Heidi Solheim?
Yes.
Doug Bensgaer?
Yes.
Thank you all, I, I appreciate the challenges with these sorts of things and, you know, I understand how trying to be consistent is really important, but it's a pretty unique proposition here, so I appreciate the time and appreciate your comments, thanks.
Thank you Ed.
Thanks Ed.
Moving on to regular business, number one, plot of survey for 2574 Cottage Avenue. Isaac, you wanna fill us in on this?
All right, so this is a property that's located out in the county, in case you didn't catch the Janesville address on it, it is actually located, it actually borders the two-mile review radius, so it is out there ways. Essentially, they own a piece of property that is located on both the east and the west side of the road of Cottage Avenue, so essentially they're just wanting to split this property into two and create parcel G, which will be located on the east side of Cottage Avenue, and then the existing address, the 2574 Cottage Avenue, would be located on the west side of the, of the road. Staff doesn't have any issues with the request, we'd recommend approval.
Questions or comments?
Move the planning and zoning commission recommend approval of the plot of survey to create parcel G to the city council. I get the right one, don't I?
Second. Yep, is there a second?
Kathy Olson seconded.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item two, plot of survey for parcel BB and parcel CC. Isaac?
Yes, so this property is located, was, was currently addressed at 940 Cedar Lane. The applicant Harold Peterson, him and his wife currently live at 940 Cedar Lane, and essentially they're wanting to split the parcel in half and then construct a new one-story house, he stated that they just wanna create a one-story house so they can live in that and they don't have to deal with stairs essentially, so they've created the parcel BB and the parcel CC, both parcels will allow for the construction of a single-family home and meet R1 single-family home setback requirements, it's zone R1, it's in future land use map shows it as residential, again, staff would recommend approval of the plot survey request.
Any questions or concerns?
As far as driveway access, there's no issues with that from the school's perspective?
No, so there is currently one driveway, there's, they have an access easement currently for the 940 Cedar Lane, Harold said that they will have an additional access easement, they'll access the property the same way.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move that the planning and zoning commission recommend approval of the plot of survey for parcel BB and parcel CC to the city council.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Old business, do we have any old business?
I do, I do not have any old business.
Okay, moving on to new business, comprehensive plan introduction.
Uh, yeah, so I'm going to ask everybody to flip to the B, and then Chris Jansen here, he's going to share a screen and he's got a presentation that he's gonna present to us.
Okay. You're on.
Can you guys see that okay? Excellent, all right, oh, yeah, sorry. Thank you for having us tonight, this is kind of our kickoff meeting for you guys as the steering committee for the comprehensive plan update that the city went to, out, got the polls for last fall, we had our kind of internal staff project team kickoff meeting in December, and then had a, and kind of laid out how we were gonna go about meeting with you guys, the leisure services, the golf commission, and then a, I'll talk a little bit about some of the engagement stuff we're doing.
We've lost the sound.
Oh.
Yeah, same with me Kathy, I can't hear anything.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that, but anyway, we, and we'll go through some of the engagement stuff, this is just kind of our kickoff to kind of familiar you guys with the process, so I'll go ahead and get started. And online, I would say Shannon is with me, and Jim is online as well, so tonight we're just gonna go through introductions, talk a little bit about the schedule and scope, give you guys a little familiarity with the, there's three plans basically going on at the same time, four really, all under one engagement process, this is one of them. We'll talk a little bit about how that's all lined up and kind of the general schedule of things, we'll review some project objectives that were from the RFP and that we have and general comp planning, and then we wanna talk to you guys, so be thinking kind of as we start to go through this, what some of your expectations and your objectives are for this process, because we wanna make sure that we can address those as part of going through this for the next 12 months or so, and some of your objectives is to make sure that it is your plan and that in the end, you, you guys have something that is definitely as usable as the plans you're using now, and has some of that incorporated into it. And then, we're gonna discuss upcoming project activities, so what's kind of going on in the next month, what we've been doing so far, and then at the end we'll do a brief SWOT activity, and I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to it. So again, Chris Jansen with MSA, I'm the, kind of the lead engagement planner for this process, Chan's with me tonight, Jim Holtz is on the line, and Jason Valerius is the other planner that's kind of working on this piece of all of these plans. Overall, we have, as I said, three basic plans going on, four if you look at the Memorial Park master plan as a separate piece of this. One is the comprehensive plan, another is the bike and pedestrian plan, which the consultant that is working with MSA on that is tool design, which they have a long history with a lot of good resources on, on bike and pedestrian planning. We, they, they will be doing, these will be separate plans, we were kind of talking about this the other day, it's not gonna be one giant document, you will still have a comprehensive plan, you will have a bike and pedestrian plan, and you'll have an update to your parks and open space plan, which Shannon is working on with another one of our planners as well, so they will be separate documents, but how we tie them all together to try and add some real value and not overextend people in terms of engagement and try and, and get a lot of that feedback that really crosses borders with all of these plans, you know, there's, if, if we start talking about mobility and those types of things, that has a comp plan element to it, right? We have a transportation part, we talked about pedestrian, a lot of the issues even you guys were dealing with tonight in terms of connectivity and, and all of that type of stuff, transportation and expansion, growth, future growth accommodating for that, both on the infrastructure side and in general connectivity and accessibility, that kind of crosses into a lot of these areas with these plans, that park and open space can be a part of it, bike and pedestrian, comprehensive plan, so we're really doing this engagement process to kind of catch all of that and hopefully give feedback, and we're gonna sort it as we go through. So, when we get to that SWOT analysis tonight, don't just be thinking comp plan, you guys can think about those elements that would also fall into these other categories, and we're gonna put all of that into these separate plans as we go through with it. In the engagement plan process, which will run throughout all of this, we're in stage one, which is basically launching that, like I said, we met in December, have started building up some of that background data, decided when we were gonna be at meetings this month, and will continue to meet throughout this process. In the comprehensive plan, we're in phase one, which is basically looking at existing conditions and starting with that feedback, so. In terms of a engagement piece, we, we're currently building an online engagement platform, so that's probably the biggest part of this, we're working with a company called Public Input, which all of these presentations for all of the, the meetings that will be on will be on that website, we're gonna do surveys through that website, we're gonna do crowdsourced mapping through that website, we'll do draft reviews through that website, it's gonna, it's gonna basically be a giant hub, not only for you guys and the city council, but the rest of the community as well to have a discussion about all of these items, so if, and I'm not gonna go through every piece of all of these kind of schedules, but these, this presentation obviously is available, if you want a copy of it before we get it on that website, let me know, I'm happy to email it, give it out, but basically, we, we start with kind of December to February, the project launch, we have the project team meetings monthly, those are kind of regularly scheduled, we'll be at your guys' meetings as part of the regular meetings, we're not asking you to take another, you know, night or another day out, and we'll just do it through the regular meetings, is kind of what we came up with. Alongside an online engagement platform, Engage Waverly is a, we're gonna kick that off once we have that online engagement piece ready, what we wanna do is reach out to a lot of the, kind of the champions of some of the other groups around the city to help push the public engagement, so we have a number of pop-up meetings set out throughout this process where we'd be going to community events, we have your typical open houses, your community meetings, surveys, stakeholder interviews, all of that kind of stuff that you're pretty familiar with, if you've done some planning of any type in, in the past, there's kind of a mix of it. We have a lot of that built into this process, we're gonna put it, you know, out, and we wanted to create this Engage Waverly Committee, so that basically we can meet with them monthly as well and say, okay, here's what we got coming up in the next month, here's what we got two months from now, how can we promote this, how can we get more feedback from the community to make sure that it's reaching as many people there would be possible to provide this feedback, so we'll be doing that in February, once we get that, that opened up, and I'll have more information on kind of the, how we're working about doing that in, at, at your February meeting basically. City council, we're meeting with them on the 24th, I believe, to kick off the process for them, in the end, they'll end up adopting these plans, so we wanna make sure we go through the same kind of introductory, what are your expectations, what are your objectives, and a SWOT analysis with them, as well as do the same thing with the rest of the community, and then Shannon will be meeting with the leisure services committee and the golf commission to talk about more of park and that master planning process and the parks and open space plan, so that's kind of the, what's coming up here. In it, we basically had kind of a, a 11-month process, 12-month, 11 months from now, kind of we'll go through November of 2022 with the adoption happening, then just meeting with you guys again, right at your regularly scheduled, scheduled meetings, so not asking you, but we would love if you come to some of those other community events if you, if you have time and help the, we'll talk a little bit about roles, so. Your duties, I'm not gonna ask you to write anything as part of this plan, fortunately, I just need, I need your community connections, I need your perspective, I need your historical perspective on what you, what you guys have struggled with in terms of development and looking at development and reviewing development, and the, not only the things that you know are coming up, but the unknown stuff that's happened in the past years, that we wanna make sure that we have goals and policies that can help you guys deal with those things, you know, that are, they're not necessarily a public map that makes sense right at this point in time, but something unknown to us today, or that we couldn't possibly think about or plan for in terms of a map and colors and that kind of thing, but that we have goals and policies to help you guys through those as a guide to that discussion. We want you to promote the public engagement tools, communicate with community members, obviously attend meetings, which, you know, we do a lot of these hybrid meetings, and I think this works, works great, and we can continue to facilitate that without a problem. Set aside time to read and review materials, we will, we will have drafts of the plan, drafts of chapters that come out, that type of stuff, promote and attend the community outreach events as you can, and then the biggest one is probably help us reach consensus in the end, you guys are the advisory, you know, planning, planning and zoning commission, but you are the advisory group, the steering committee for the comprehensive plan effort, big lift. Any questions on roles?
Who's the project team?
The project team?
Do you have this in here, the project team? Who's the project team?
Oh, the project team, Bill's on the project team, Isaac's on the project team, James is on the project team, it's basically city, city staff.
So the city staff's gonna drive this instead of the P and Z?
No, the project team...
By the way it looks here, that's what I'm seeing.
Well, I, I apologize, let me clarify.
Because I've served on the last board of the comprehensive plan and the city did not drive it, you know.
What we, and actually, we can talk a little bit about what we did at the project team meeting, at the project team meeting, what we spent most of the time doing was figuring out when P and Z met, when city council meets, when the leisure services meets, and when the golf commission meets, and getting on the agendas and that type of thing, we made no decisions about the plan with the project team, other than here's the meetings we're gonna go to, that is the intent of the project team, is to help facilitate the process, not provide content and not necessarily review.
Well, when you go, say, the project team, that seems to me like that's who's driving it.
Right, I understood that, that wording could lead to that, but that is, that's not how the process is designed.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so comprehensive plan, you guys, you've been through four of these, you said, Harry?
Yeah.
So, these slides, I'm gonna have you do them, I think. So, what is comprehensive plan? You guys have a future land use map behind you there, I see, so you guys are using that piece of a comprehensive plan. The other big piece of a comprehensive plan is an implementation plan, and then there's all of these chapters that cover all kinds of things, now on ours, we have, we've, in terms of the scope that we put out, there's economic development, there's housing in neighborhoods, there's historical preservation, there is transportation, basically, all of these elements that go into that map in the end, and how that map functions, and again, like I said, the decisions that you can't necessarily draw on a map that you guys are gonna have to deal with in the coming years. It is a, it is a guide, it's, it's called a number of different things, but it basically helps ensure the future land use and growth is consistent with this vision that the community will come up with as part of this process. It is not a zoning ordinance or subdivision regulations, that's one of the things that work with a lot, especially when we're doing our education with the public as we have those community meetings and talk about that, is this is a guide, this is a guide for the planning and zoning commission, this is a guide for the city council, this is a guide for the entire community to help that consistent growth that's consistent with the vision. The zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations are tools for implementation, and as you guys are well aware of. Why we plan, has an impact on quality of life, that's a, a big part of it, is that all of these elements that we'll look into and getting that community vision and building consensus through your guys' advisor, as an advisory group to this, we are looking to improve quality of life as the community continues to grow. We wanna find an organized way to anticipate, shape, change, and we wanna form a basis for good implementation, again, there's two big pieces that, that I will see that... Again, there's two big pieces that I will see that you guys will use as this plan goes forward. The city will use, the community will use. One of them is that future land use map, which you're really familiar with in that chapter. The other is the implementation plan, which we build our implementation plans. So they have ongoing priorities, they have two- to three-year priorities, five- to 10-year priorities, 10- to 20-year priorities, because all of those involve different levels and different resources to be contributed to that or set aside, different grants to be applied for, that type of thing, and the timing. So we build those, and we would hope that you have a plan that you guys are using at every meeting for the most part, especially as you're looking to guide future growth. And in the end, we want a well-planned community that is attractive, has reasonable taxes and fees, adequate public services, and is a good place to live and work, which is what you have now. We want that vision to continue into the future. Dave, I think you have questions?
Well, I'm listening.
All right, good. It's hard. It's hard. I can only see the eyes. So project objectives, what we have, we want to develop that consistent plan for future growth. We want to create goals and policies that will help make those decisions, help guide those decisions, not necessarily make them, because it's just, it is a guide, but help guide decisions for growth, whether they're known or unknown, consistent, that is consistent. We want to, I'm sorry, identify existing development regulations. So when I said earlier that it's not subdivision regulations and it's not zoning, we will identify changes to those to help implement the plan that you guys will want to do in the future. So we want to make sure that we're suggesting any changes to those that are consistent with this plan so that it can be implemented. And then finally, we want to have a variety of public engagement activities, which we've laid out as part of this overall public engagement. Now, what are your guys' expectations and objectives for this plan? Beyond some of the ones that we've already gone through?
I think a good one you hit on, Chris, was really that engagement. And I think in a way, as of a match, it's hard to talk with a mask on, but... You know, so like really matching what the community wants to what the land use is, right? The future land use is. And I think that's key. And that comes with engagement, that comes with communication, that comes with transparency, in my mind. So that's what pops in first.
Thank you.
One of the things that I think of, and it kind of ties into our discussion we were having with Ed in related schools and stuff, is the connectivity of our community is, in my opinion, fairly poor. Like I live out where the new school is going to be, and there's no way for my kids to ride a bike without being on the highway with the... You know, so looking at how we develop, you know, so I like the idea that we're doing all these plans at one time because it's going to tie together. But from a healthy community perspective, unless you live in the core part of town, you don't have access to some of those amenities easily. So I think, you know, looking at the periphery as well of the community, too.
Excellent. How about my folks online? Any thoughts?
Not for me.
I think, too, what's important, at least for me, is things like that we have a really wonderful set of amenities. We have trees, we've got the river, and how the best use for those and how do we integrate those? And how do we keep them? I think too often people, well, we're just going to give up this little piece of green or this stand of trees because it's just one little piece. But once it's gone, it's gone. And now you think about Cedar Rapids and all the trees that they've lost, and it's just, it's sad.
Changes the character a lot.
Exactly.
And again, it has that impact on the quality of life. You know, the frame of the street, the safety of it, you know, all of those things, it plays in more than you think sometimes, that type of stuff.
One other area I'd really challenge the project team is to how do we get others involved? So I think it was five years ago, we did a revision, and we tried to bring in some other commissions, like economic development, and we had just very, very low participation. There might have been a couple of members. And I just, I think it's essential that we really try to pull those groups together. There's been a lot of turnover on economic development, so a lot of new ideas and thoughts. And there are some of our industry leaders that are going to be helping us grow the community with jobs and bringing more people in. So I think that's probably going to be one of the bigger challenges, is to get the true engagement, and especially with people who are actively involved in industry and growth. Yeah, so I really challenge the team to figure out how to do that.
I think it needs to go even further than that, too, because I think that is really important because those are the people who obviously participate on a certain level. But the more this looks like it has, and you keep using the term engagement, which I think is a really important piece of the puzzle, is to make it look like it's not a top-down kind of a process, right? I think that the more it can include people who aren't participating in these kinds of things and get them to be excited about it so that they look like, it at least feels like they have a stake in what's going on.
Part of their community. So like, there's many service groups in Waverly and very active service groups. You know, really getting out to those as well. You know, and then the general public, that's a little harder to reach, I think. But, you know, if you can partner with our newspapers and others, try to get information out the radio. You know, K Way is a huge community partner in helping just to create that excitement, especially when we start talking about parks and open spaces. That, to me, is a little more exciting than a housing subdivision, some of that type of stuff.
It's a graspable topic to them, too.
Yeah, Memorial Park, everybody wants to know what we're going to do with it and how is that going to, you know, going to evolve? And I work at the hospital. I want to know what's going to happen at Memorial Park so I know what it's going to affect long-term there.
But good point, Heidi, in terms of some of the groups, like, you know, there's a strong Kiwanis group, there's a strong, you know, exchange club, there's three PEO groups.
There's parent groups, the daycare has a parent group. There are so many opportunities to go to, where you might get groups of people and get them excited about specific areas.
And there's a large population that's under the age of 18.
Yeah.
There are high school kids who are good communicators and good thinkers and kids who use the parks.
I think it's important, I still have a problem with your project team. I think that's going to get sent the wrong message out to the community.
You just used the term, right?
Yeah, I don't know what it is, but I think it's going to feel like it's being driven by the city staff and not by the P and Z, and I don't care. The transparency is a concern to me. I mean, I think, you know, in the past, we've set down the city map. There's a lot of things we have to be taking a look at. Right now, most of the traffic is flowing back onto Bremer Avenue. And it's an actual, with the three-lane, it's been nothing but a headache. I mean, I stop and think on 12th Street, cars lined up eight to 10 deep trying to get onto Bremer Avenue in the morning. We don't have an arterial, and that's one of the things we've always stressed over the last few comprehensive plans of figuring out how do we get these arterials in place to get away from Bremer Avenue. If we're going to have a three-lane, we got to get them moving around other places. And I think it's caused people running red lights to try to make, see it day in, day out between Fourth and Bremer Avenue. And people, and I think those are things that, one of the things is traffic, you know, talking about the traffic. But also getting arterials, I mean, that's one of the things we've talked about in the past. So we have to do not only just the other things that we've been talking about here, but I think we have to have engagement from the different groups. I think the service clubs is a great one. If we can get them in here, you know, we've worked on these. I don't think it has to be during the planning and zoning meeting. I think it can be other times that we have people come in here and tell us what their concerns are and let the people speak in this community, not the staff. I think that's important.
And I think, you know, kind of last thing for me would be, you know, somewhere finding the balance between, you know, what the landowners want, you know, or are impacted by, and then what the community wants and needs, right? And then trying to find that developable balance, I guess, if that's a term stated.
I would think that it would be an important goal to bring everyone together and to reduce any divisiveness that happens to be living in our community at this time.
Excellent. That is fantastic feedback. We have, there's definitely some things we can adjust, I think, to make sure that, and there's definitely some processes that we've already built in that we can expand and make sure that. So we have stakeholder interviews and focus group interviews built into this. A lot of the times, that's where we reach out to some of those service groups and say, hey, we're taking an hour, get as many people as you can, and we're going to be in town. Come meet with us and talk about it, or send a few representatives or that type of thing, as well as kind of that engagement thing. There's definitely some opportunity for that. And the project team, you know what? I'll talk to them. Maybe we can find another turn for it. I don't think, it's not anything set in stone in terms of what we call that because it's just, it's just basically the consultants and city staff. And as I said, at this point, it has not been a content review board. It's been, hey, we need this information, and when are these meetings that we can go to? So, but as you said, transparency and how that's perceived. I would hate for that to be a divisive thing or be a roadblock for people having buy-in with the plan, you know what I mean? Thinking if it was driven not by the community itself or the community's representatives. So we will look into that, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Feedback. Thank you.
One thing I would encourage, too, is to maybe not make everybody come to you or to hear for it.
Yeah, we also have those pop-up events, too.
Yeah, we have pop-up meetings built throughout this. So those are ones where we don't even, we come to a community event.
Right, we could guarantee, like, for instance, exchange club, you would have 50 people there in the morning and to be able to share the process. I mean, so there's things like that that are set up that we can help facilitate as a community, too.
Yeah, those pop-up meetings are probably some of the best because we just set up a booth. That's something that's already going on and have, whatever's going on with the con-plan at that particular time, whether it's this kind of beginning, what are your issues, what are your opportunities, what do you see for growth? Or here's the draft plan, what do you think of it? You know, draw on this map, let us know what your thoughts are. We get great feedback from those because it is those people that aren't going to come to a seven o'clock meeting, you know, on a Thursday night.
Right, and they'll be spreading the word, too. Because what we hear about there, you share, you know, so it'll help that community sign.
Yeah, we get some, and the feedback there is honest. And it's, you also, it's great to design an engagement process where you will have people that will come to a meeting and don't mind talking in public. You know, maybe they're used to it, something they do for the job. There are other people that don't want to speak about whatever they're passionate about or whatever they're having an issue with, that want to pull you aside. And so we build in those opportunities as well, whether it's an online thing and they can just engage that way or stakeholder interview where they want to sign up for. So when we do those stakeholder holder interviews, we pretty much open them up to anybody and they can just sign up for a time, basically, and come talk to us about whatever. Like you said, maybe there's somebody that is involved in growth in the community and isn't going to sit on a committee, that type of thing, or isn't going to stand up in a public meeting and tell us, well, we're planning on doing this, or we're having trouble with this, or here's my roadblock with the city, you know, whatever that is. We want to make sure that we get that input and get that feedback. Now, we don't call them out in the plan. You know, it doesn't get written into the plan like so-and-so said they don't like that the city has this process. But it does go into there as, hey, here's maybe a roadblock to growth, or here's a speed bump that we can address through some sort of regulatory, you know, change or process change, whatever it is. So thank you. We will continue to work on that, and like I said, I appreciate your feedback. And I appreciate your feedback for the next coming meetings as well as we continue to work on this process.
One thing I would say is... A quick question?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Kathy, go ahead, Kathy.
Does this mean, for, good discussion, I think, about the service clubs? And does this mean that if we could do something remotely with you, you could do a program?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, great.
Yeah, happy to do that. We can do the, we do a little presentation like this if you've got some of that stuff going on, or I can, we can call in. I'm in Des Moines, but Shannon...
I wrote her, I think, was very interested.
Okay, I would say I'm in Des Moines, Shannon's a little closer, she's in Cedar Rapids, and Jim's in Dubuque. So we're all, we're available, you know, if there was that situation where they needed to be somebody there in person, too, for some of that stuff. Yeah.
Well, the only thing I'd say is that I think this is a really important comprehensive plan because with the two new schools that we're doing, it's going to change the patterns and so forth through this community and where people are going to... Because you've got patterns of where people have had middle school kids and grade school kids. Where's the traffic pattern going to be for sure? Are we looking at everything that needs to be done or some things that need to be changed? I don't know for sure.
Right.
But I think it's something that's a whole group and then other parents that would be at the service group meetings and things like that that can give some input to say, okay, are there some things we need to be looking at? The city needs to put in their plan as far as building. I mean, you know, as far as some of these, you know, roads that could possibly be changed or added, you know, to the, say, like the Western School, you know, and also the Corden Road School, because there's one of the things we've talked about is getting that road all the way over to Bremer Road, you know, and things like that, that maybe that becomes a priority. We need to make sure that the city has those on their priorities.
Right, and they get vetted through that community process. So that we tell people, like, here's why connectivity is important. So there's always a little bit of education to part of this stuff, you know, because, like you were saying, my kids are riding on the highway if they want to go anywhere, you know, south, in that case. Because you're in that cul-de-sac neighborhood, basically, that's just to the west of the schools. As he was going through the site plan and everything, I was on the map, kind of looking at, okay, well, what is, what is to the north? What is to the east there and how is it going to connect? So, yeah, absolutely. And those two schools will create growth pressure around them in terms of new growth. That's just, you know, people will want to live nearby, or people will want to build houses for people to live nearby. However, whatever chicken, egg comes first, but there will be infrastructure and land use pressures in both of those areas, absolutely.
And we may need an underpass like we did on, created on Cedar Island Parkway, you know, to address your concern there, you know, so they don't have to go across that highway.
Yeah. That is the advantage, I think, to doing all of these plans at once as well. So we do have that pedestrian, bicycle and pedestrian piece coming. And Shannon's working on the parks and the open space piece as well to build all of those together as part of this process, and we can put all of it through the public engagement ringer, as we would call it. So, excellent. Upcoming stuff, so the project launch meeting, we had that in December, and again, that was a scheduling meeting. The project advisory scheduling group is meeting monthly to talk...
What did they call it in the past, Dave?
I'll keep going on.
I was going to shut up, but I mean, yeah. But I think that, you talk about, and I don't even know if I'm going to say this, but, you know, I think there's a large group of people out there that don't have a trust for the city administration. And so I think it's important that, I don't know how you name it or anything else, but you got to be careful there.
I appreciate it because, again, you mentioned divisiveness, and is that a name of something? That's us meeting once a month to figure out when there's meetings coming up that we can take advantage from or when to schedule a community, you know, open house, that type of thing? I don't want that to be something, I don't want that to be a reason somebody doesn't go online and tell me what they feel about this growth or that growth or what their barriers to reinvesting in their business is or, you know, that type of thing. So, yeah.
So maybe an opportunity for that is to really maybe better outline the approval, the development and approval process.
Okay.
So who, I mean, what is us as a steering committee for the comprehensive plan? What is our role, what authority or that do we have in the same, you know, all the way through? Whereas ultimately, it's going to be the city council.
Yeah, you got, like anything you guys do, we make a recommendation to them. You know, basically, you guys will serve as that steering committee, but to outline that process. We're going to review this for the next 11 months, and then we will make a recommendation to city council, and then city council would adopt it as they do with the other plans as well. Same thing with the leisure services and the golf commission.
And so with that, then what is the role of city staff? Is it to be content experts, to be code? Is it to be content experts, to be code experts, that type of stuff, or are they guiding the process? Or, you know what I mean? So if they're guiding the process, that would be more suspicious, I think, than if they're facilitating meetings and the process.
Which is, yeah, which is basically what, what is, what will be going on, you know, we'll lean on them for some expertise, especially when it comes to public infrastructure, those types of things, you know, that, that's where I have to lean on the city staff, and, and obviously some of their efforts in, in terms of what they're doing in their different departments, but if, that's more of the background information than the what are we doing going forward information. So, yeah, absolutely, we can, we will continue to work on that, and talk with the project team in February on, on that as well.
Does somebody have a chat, if they want to say something?
I think Doug did something, I don't, I don't know how to get to him.
Doug commented, he said, "Where is this going?"
Fair enough, Doug, we're going to keep moving on.
I just, I saw the chat, I didn't want to leave somebody, sorry.
So, we, that Engage Waverly will be looking at for me in February, launching that engagement platform this month. City council workshop again is on the 24th, and then we have both the leisure services and golf commission meetings this month and next month. So, those are the upcoming things in the next couple of months. Finally, we'll get to the SWOT activity. So, we're going to, real briefly, because you guys don't have to lift this on your own, we will do this across these engagement meetings, kind of these first ones, as well as the online stuff, and the first community input workshop that we do, all involve a SWOT analysis, which is talking about growth and strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. Your strengths are the things that are internal and obviously positive, your opportunities are the things that may be things to grow, things that need to be, or desires, those types of things. Whereas your weaknesses are the internal things that need to be dealt with as part of this entire planning effort, and then the threats are the external things that also have to be dealt with, but maybe are not something you have control over, it's more of a, how will we address this issue? The questions we want to think about as we go through these categories here are, which areas of Waverly do you see growing in 20 years, and how, and what are the challenges? What are, what areas of Waverly provide an opportunity for redevelopment? What do you envision the community character being in 20 years? What would be great about Waverly in 20 years? What obstacles has the community overcome? What will attract families over the next 20 years? And what needs to be protected as the city, you know, again, back to that character question, what needs to be protected as, as you get new families and new people and new businesses and all of that type of stuff? So, for these, we're going to go through beautification, development and mobility, and they're pretty open-ended, kind of like we did with the objectives and the expectations, but I just, we want you guys to list off as many, kind of, let me know whether it's a positive or a negative, or maybe both. There's, there's certainly some things under beautification or development or mobility that would be a little bit of both. Maybe they're an opportunity and, you know, a, a weakness if it hasn't been addressed. So, we'll start with beautification.
I think the tree canopy as possible threat.
Loss of the tree canopy.
Loss of it, yeah.
Oh, you got it? Okay.
I think possibly a, a threat, or an issue at least, is there is a segment of the community for whom beautification is not important in terms of spending money, taxpayer money. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the river is a strength that's underutilized.
And an opportunity.
Yeah, it's, it's an opportunity for sure.
Excellent.
Beautification.
I don't know, I, I kind of see like the, the city center, right? I mean, as stuff grows outward, you know, this is kind of weakness, right? How do you, how do you keep your city center strong and not run down, or, you know, not used, those buildings, et cetera, so.
I think downtown too, right now, I see it as a strength, on some, especially on some of the projects, like the updating the apartments above the retail. There are a lot of very vital businesses, and when you compare it to a lot of other cities this size, we have a lot fewer empty businesses or buildings downtown.
Not a bunch of storage. I don't, go around sometime and look in some of the downtowns, they're struggling because people have just turned their commercial buildings into storage, for the most part. Yeah.
That could very well change, once the bridge goes out for a year.
Yeah.
That's my biggest concern.
Okay, that's-
It's a big issue.
Yeah, I think you have to recognize, you know, that, you know, what, what keeps the business there, and what makes the business lead, or whatever.
I think a little bit yet, we're still, we have still vacant lots around the town from the flood, which haven't, you know, most of them haven't been redeveloped, or even sometimes not maintained extremely well. But they, sometimes it's like blight in specific areas of the community.
I see the empty, the historic neighborhoods that have been defined as really as an opportunity to bring back a core, to really focus on a core.
Yeah, I think it's a tough balance, though, and you think of it as, like, the schools, right? The schools are moving out, things are moving away from the center, so I guess that's where I just think, that's a, that's a risk, right? As, as everything goes outward, how do you keep the center strong?
Especially those traffic generators. You know, the traffic, we, traffic's a bad thing, right? You don't want wicked traffic, all that kind of stuff, but if you're selling things to people that-
You need traffic.
Are traffic.
From a beautification point of view, I've always objected to the hodgepodge look of Fourth Street Southwest, you know, the whole sort of no rules and regula- I hate to put it that way, because everybody hates rules and regulations, but I do think that communities that have planned, um, commercial development on those kinds of strips do look better and feel more attractive to go to and shop in, than Waverly has been successful at implementing.
Okay.
Not to mention-
What are you asking for? I don't, I don't quite understand what you're asking for.
You mean me or him, or the SWOT thing?
No, you went for, yeah.
Oh, me?
Yeah.
Um, consistent sidewalks, consistent kinds of signage or tree planting, street lights that make sense.
Something that ties that whole corridor.
Together, some sort of visual element that says, "This is a connected path."
Okay.
I know it's architect speak, I get it, but-
Yeah.
Excellent.
And you're surrounded.
Both sides, get where you sit.
No, I just, I, I don't know.
Kind of confused there. You can almost date the expansion by the scenery, right? I mean, you kind of know when you're in the more residential part versus the more industrial part versus the more commercial part.
I actually think a good example is the way that, two examples actually, are what Waterloo has done on University Avenue, to make it feel like a defined and designed road. And you start to look at the elements that they've done above and beyond the roundabouts, but, and also even on 63s from Allen to downtown, well, I think that, that the gestures that were made there really made it feel like a planned and designed roadway.
Yeah, and then parts of Des Moines, going from downtown, like out to the fairgrounds.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just elements there that, you know, you're going through a pretty industrialized area, but, you know, again, the sidewalks are there, the plantings are there, and so forth, but-
The streetscape. Yeah. Excellent.
You mean, you're talking University out to the fairgrounds?
Hmm, no, from downtown, like Seventh Avenue.
Well, the university goes to the fairgrounds.
I'm just talking about when I get on the bus downtown to go out to the fair.
Whatever that around you, it's a put-together, even though-
I think it's Martin Luther.
Yeah, the hodgepodge of land use behind this streetscape that has some put-togetherness.
Yeah, it's Martin Luther.
Okay, let's jump on to development, same thing. When I say development, what are some of the things that come to mind that are, that are challenges you know you have to deal with, threats that you're seeing?
I think the development of the schools is a strength. I mean, I think that-
The grow, yeah, growing schools, yep.
I think, and this has been, the 20 years that I've lived in our community is housing. We, you know, to, to be able to sustain and build housing is still going to be one of our biggest challenges, because we need more people to grow our businesses and go from there.
We also have great resources, like the hospital, which is kind of amazing, we have this great hospital in town as we do. Wasn't trying to buy points with you, Heidi, but it's true.
But I think, I think another strength is, I mean, the university, right? Certainly brings, brings an element that other small communities-
That's true.
Does not have.
If the college wasn't there, it would definitely be a very different place.
If the college were there, I wouldn't be here. I mean, when I wanted to move back to Iowa, it had to be a community with a four-year college, and, so-
So that, that's a certain strength.
It's definitely a strength.
And so maybe across the board, it's our industry, because we have a very, I mean, we have healthcare is a huge sector, we've got, I mean, education, we have manufacturing, I mean, we, we have, I think, some very positives there.
And we have choc-, it smells like chocolate when I drive in.
It does. Chocolate is so much better than oatmeal, and the other smells like nothing.
That is true, the process.
That, those are bad.
Oh, we're, uh, there's a tone spices, I think they got bought out by somebody, but by our office, and so every once in a while, you walk out, and you'd be like, "Cinnamon Day," or it's-
Happiness.
"Allen Day," that's a poem one. Yeah, interesting. Chocolate is a good smell.
But I think development's somewhat of a weakness for us too, because if we don't have that housing and some of that other, it is very challenging from employment perspective to bring more industry here, and, you know, our more businesses and retail and, you know, so it goes both ways on that.
Yeah, I think housing will take care of itself if there's the opportunities. And I don't get concerned about, as long as we have the areas to develop, that'll take care of itself. You've still got to provide the jobs, and I think the threat is the four lane to Sierra Falls. I think it's a huge threat to us.
I have as many people coming to my business, though, from that four lane.
I know, but the people for retail, they're going down there, and they aren't going to develop any retail out on the south side, I'm pretty sure. It's too easy to go down there-
Yeah, to keep going.
And just go down to Sierra Falls now, it's much easier to get into that area down on the south side of Sierra Falls, and I, I think that's a threat, to our retail, and I think that's going to be a big threat with the bridge going out. Because people start doing patterns, and it's easier, where they have to jump on, down there, instead of coming downtown for one, one store, they can go down there and hit seven or eight.
And they're usually bigger stores, with more variety. But in, going back to housing, I think we are starting to develop a wider scope of types of housing.
Well, we're still looking at $100,000 lots, the majority of the time, and I, I think that is really a struggle for who I'm trying to recruit in for our business. You know, $400,000 homes are not in everyone's, and that's really what it takes in the current subdivisions we have open. And, and so I still, you know, I still think, I want my kids to move back to Waverly maybe someday, or, or that, and I don't know how, you know, that's going to be in there. Sure.
I think this maybe fits in the development. Go ahead Kathy.
No, I was just going to say, I think this fits in the development area, but, and maybe as an opportunity, as much as anything, is, you know, the world has changed in terms of people being able to work from home, and many of them, if they have the right amenities and the right connectivity, would love a community the size of Waverly, for example. And it's kind of a marketing opportunity as well, that, that might be a, we might, we could be a draw for, for a lot of people who are now able to work from home.
Absolutely.
You know, David, this fits into the retail, but like dining, right? I mean, there are not very many options, and how sustainable would the options be?
I feel like pizza. I didn't mean it, but you know.
I know what you mean, but, yeah.
I know exactly what you're talking about, yeah.
Food is definitely a, a weakness.
Food is a weakness.
Restaurants are a weakness in Waverly, for sure.
Yep.
Unless you like pizza. Or Jimmy John's.
Can like pizza like one night a week, and then you gotta, you gotta spread out.
Then you gotta go to Cedar Falls.
Okay, well, in the interest of time, let's move on to mobility. So, we've talked a little bit about it, and that's fine, if all of these sort of, kind of weave into one another in one way, shape or form, so that's, they're kind of designed to be open-ended in that sense, but-
I think Dave hit the big one earlier with arterials. So living on the north side of town, it takes me as long to get to Walmart than if I was at Walmart and went to Sierra Falls, I mean, just getting through town can take-
It's kind of true.
It seems like, you know, it's 10 minutes, and it shouldn't take that really, I'm only going three miles or-
I just had a customer that bought a lot out at, at Centennial, and they live up in the northwest part of town, and they have a job in Jamesville, and they bought out there because they don't, it takes them 10 minutes, and they want to cut down their time to drive to work.
I do think that north-south connector is going to be a really critical piece of the story going forward. I, I mean, I live cut out by Summit, not quite as far, but it, it, it's really slow to get all the way to Walmart, seven to 10 minutes.
And it just feels cumbersome. Bridges are an issue, that's for sure. Not only the Bremer Bridge that will be under construction, but also the, I don't know what you call it, the rail trail or that bridge as well, those are issues.
Okay, thank you.
I think mobility around, like getting out to Summit, so there's one bridge, that Adams Parkway Bridge, in 2008, maybe we'll never have that incident again, I had to go to, had to drive around to get to Jamesville to come into the south side of Waverly, and then the next two days, I had to go north to Plainfield and around to get into Waverly. So the, the river limits us because we have such few crossing points from that. I mean, we really separate the community, we separate it from an emergency response position to on the southeast side of town, which is very concerning for development.
I do think that there's some advantages. I mean, I think the bike trails are really, the bike trail is a really positive thing. I, the, the walking opportunities are pretty good. There are some gaps, you know, I walk that loop around the river a lot. From the Adams Parkway Bridge to Cedar Lane is always a little like, a little tough.
There's some gaps.
It's like, there's a gap in terms of safety of path.
Yeah, slowing down will be good for the schools, because you hit the 35 to 45 right at that, the Cedar Lane, and people start flying, they're usually 55 by the time they hit Summit Drive.
There's no safe way for me to walk from the Murphy Edition to Heidi's house.
Other than on the highway with a gap, not to.
Another weakness with mobility is the train, and the fact that sometimes it will completely cover the road for, it's been 45 minutes to an hour.
Just seven.
Just, yeah.
Over what?
Over by the high school.
No, over by-
That part too.
On 20th, where they come along on the main road-
By, on 20th, where they come along on the main route and then stop because they're
backing up to taking the spur down to Nestle's to either drop off or pick up cars and then coming back. And recently, we're getting as much as 45 minutes to an hour where the road is blocked.
Oh, goodness, I didn't know that.
One time I got caught on the wrong side. Luckily, it was warmer.
Are you saying now that there'd be those improvements on Cedar Lane is still not good?
The what?
It's not done. It's not done yet.
Yeah, they're, they're widening it out for you to walk from, and yeah.
I don't mean Cedar Lane. I mean-
So there's still a third of Cedar Lane that's not widened yet.
Yeah, right on that north part.
Yeah.
But, but to get, be north of Cedar Lane to go up to the school, there's no path where the school will go or up to Summit.
Very steep ditches. I mean, they're, and the shoulder is only about two feet. I mean, it's a very-
So it needs to be wider than what it is. I mean, it was, it used to be, because I used to live up in Murphy, which it was.
There's an incredible amount of tractor traffic on that road. And then the, getting to the other communities too. So I mean, it's a, it's an extremely busy road.
Yeah, Portland's very busy.
Yeah, but the tra, or the tractors and that, when you hit the fall and spring, you're, you can't pass there. But that'll be a main road for us now, which-
Well, I think it's interesting, because Cedar Lane, part of it got rebuilt.
Okay.
And part of it has a, is wide enough to really accommodate the pedestrian and bicycle traffic along it, except for a couple of spots where they just couldn't make it wide enough. So it's a little interesting that you can feel like you've got all the space in the world, and then you have to be on high alert, because it narrows, you know, where the hill, where it's higher or closer to the edge of the water.
Excellent.
But, I mean, that's a really popular path.
That's Cedar Lane. Well, unless there's any final ones, we've, we're coming up to a lot of us here, so I will go ahead and stop for this evening. And thank you again for having us. Jim, Shannon, myself. We'll be back in February with, you know, another stage in this process for you guys to help.
Can I ask you a couple of quick questions?
Absolutely.
Will you send a copy of this information about the teams and who, how all this is gonna work?
Yeah, I'll be happy to. I can send you the whole contract. It, you know, in terms of our, our scope that we have. Yeah.
It might be good for a refresher, because how many months has it been since the RFP we even looked at?
Yeah.
It might get me back in-
A little one.
Yeah.
The mind, set again.
Absolutely.
Isaac, do we have a copy of the last comp plan? This is-
Yes.
You said that. I, I think you said-
I can drive to send it. I don't know if I've tried in the past, and it was too large of a file.
Will those kinds of things be available through the-
Yeah. So I, there's a copy on the website at least.
Okay, we'll send the link to that.
One of them. But yes, we will put them on our site so that somebody could go and look at, so they can go look at all of that stuff. The presentations, all the existing plans that we're updating. There's a Parks and Open Space Plan. There's, you know, all of that.
Will all that stuff be accessible through that website?
Yeah.
When?
Oh, later this month. We're, it's being built right now. It's, 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 it's a custom deal that they have. They integrate with all kinds of stuff, so.
Okay. Those are my only questions.
Yeah. It'll be, the, the idea behind that is that any of you, anybody on leisure services, anybody at city council that gets asked about the process, even if they haven't gone to that last meeting, or maybe you guys don't know exactly what's going on with, you know, the Parks and Open Space Plan at this point in time, you can tell somebody to go to that website and, you just say, hey, check out the website. All the stuff's on there. Let me know if you have any questions. So it's a really useful tool in that sense, because of that transparency.
You don't have to send documents through email.
Okay.
Excellent. Well, thank you.
Thank you for coming and filling us in. And we'll look forward to seeing you again next month.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I have motion that we adjourn.
All right. Done.
You like to do that.
Don't send your post-it there.